Good morning, Webber Guard. July 16th, 2019. Board of Commissioners meeting. I ask Commissioner John Bell for invocations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a special person this morning. Sorry, Mr. Sheriff, it's not you today. Mr. Public Health Director, Mr. David Madden is going to do it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let us bow our heads and pray. All-knowing Father, we stand before you today to seek your blessing and guidance, to receive a spirit of thoughtfulness and understanding, and have that spirit offer wisdom among those today who shall conduct decisions for the people of Wayne County. Father, I ask you to move among us a nature of fellowship, a nature strong in purpose that directs each man and each woman to follow a just principle, to allow your will upon their efforts so that good is fostered in every way, so that brotherhood and sisterhood be cherished and valued, so that love and goodwill lift each of us up beyond the mundane deliberations of this world. I ask that you do so, and that we understand and grow, and that we prosper in your grace. All Father, let they who avoid you seek you; let those that reject you recognize your sacrifice; and Lord, let those that know you be strengthened by you and their resolve. I ask that you bless the men before me, bless the people around me; I ask that you bless those that serve and place of me for my liberties; and Lord, I ask that you bless this great country, the United States of America. I ask all of these things in God's holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
This plan, please to fly a float. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I get approval of minutes for June 18th, 2019. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Any discussion? All in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Any discussion, adjustment to agenda, Mr. Honeycutt?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Any board member have anything to add? Can I have much to approve agenda?
So moved.
Please, you made, all in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Mr. Honeycutt now has special presentations.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Commissioners. If I could, ask the Finance Department to come forward, please.
Y'all got to come in behind the roof. That's the ones that probably may not need the roof.
Let me first offer by saying, this is a very special group of people. This is a group of people who do everything from our payroll, who do everything from count payable, count receivable, budgets, you name it, they do it, and they do it exceptionally well. We are very lucky and fortunate to have the level of accounting that we have in Wayne County, and we are awarded for that. We are now, for the 23rd year in a row, awarded the award for financial reporting and achievement. And again, not every county gets this award. Not every county excels at the requirements that it takes to receive this award. But to do it for 23 years in a row, 23 years in a row, is exceptional, and it shows the commitment that we have, making sure that we're looking after your money the best way that it should be, making sure that the citizens' money is being spent like it should, and to be making sure that when we have funds, that we are doing and spending it in the most effective and efficient way possible. So again, I'm very proud to work with all of y'all. I appreciate the work that you do, I get to see it on a daily basis, everything from the mundane to the really hard and very complicated financial issues that we have, such as borrowing $42 million on a bottom purchase. So, but again, Allison Spate is the director, and with that said, I will turn this and give this to Allison.
Thank you.
So Allison, do you want to say anything about your staff?
Just that it doesn't happen by myself. I have a fantastic staff that makes it happen, and we're more of a team than we are anything else, and I appreciate for each one of them, so thank you.
I know it seems weird that as a mysterious photographer, but look at the cameras out there, and smile, and Joel, he's looking at you from the other way, and you're good. Congratulations.
Jimmy is not here, so we will go ahead and turn it over to Sarah Stout, who is the CEO of East Point. For Sarah to make the presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm delighted to be here with you this morning. As Mr. Honeycutt said, I am Sarah Stroud, and I'm the CEO of East Point, and I'm excited to update you about what we're doing, and specifically as it relates to Wayne County. So, do I need to do, no, we're good. All right, so I'm going to touch on several areas, if we can advance one more.
Oh, you can.
I can do it?
Hold it.
Ah, there we go. Perfect. So I'm going to touch on several areas. First, our, a little bit about our operations and update you on that, talk about our customer service, our provider network, specifically in Wayne County, how we invest in Wayne County, and then I'm going to conclude with the five-minute tutorial on Medicaid transformation. So please stop me if you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, and if I don't know answers, of course, I'll get them for you. So a little bit about our current operations. We currently have 284 employees. That's down from probably where we were three or four years, we topped over 300, but now we have 284, and 24 of those employees live in Wayne County. I want to tell you what that means in terms of numbers. It's a total of about $1.7 million in salaries and benefits that come back to Wayne County in terms of employment. Our current budget, and these numbers have been updated for the beginning of our fiscal year, which, like yours, is July 1, our current budget is a total of $317 million. Medicaid makes up about $277 million of that, and our fund balance is at $118 million. But only about $14 million of that is unassigned as we move into the next fiscal year. You can see in this pie chart, this represents the populations of our 10 counties, and you can see Wayne over on the left-hand side, the, almost the biggest county we have. Robinson is the largest, at 20% of the population, but Wayne is 19%. And then the next slide matches up with the claims we pay to providers for benefits, again, in terms, as it relates to all of our counties, and Wayne's population is 19%. And this is really coincidence, it's interesting how it often lines up like this, but the claims paid are 19% of our claims as well. And here you have the actual number of claims paid. These are just for Wayne County. So you can see in fiscal year 18, we paid $40.06 million, and in fiscal year 19, that we have just concluded, there are claims were up almost $2 million, $1.5 million. Well, there it is, $1.04 million increase over 18 to 19. As you know, you contribute $42,000 in maintenance of effort, and as you know, that is, that is not the amount that you originally contributed when East Point was established, but with that $42,000, we fund Family Drug Treatment Court. In fiscal year 19, that just concluded, there were 4,622 people, members, who received a Medicaid service, and that was out of a Medicaid population of just over 33,000. The indigent population that received state funds, there were 1,789. And as you know, the state funding has been cut to the LME/MCOs over the past several years, so we, we do pull from our fund balance to fund those state services as they are needed. Our Access to Care Center handled 5,163 calls from Wayne County, and that number is, correlates, again, coincidentally, with the members who receive service. Usually I see a little bit closer alignment, but for Wayne County, we actually received more calls than people who actually went into service. So that, that tells me that people are using that line also for informational purposes, which is not a bad thing, that's a good thing. Okay, before I move on, any questions about that?
I'm not sure, should I hold my question to the end, and maybe I should?
Maybe I'll answer them before we get there?
You might.
Maybe. It's up to you.
I'll ask this question, you don't have the answer right now, but I want you to prepare to answer. If the governor's desire for Medicaid was put in place, I want you to tell us how positive that would affect Wayne County and the population that we have here. I'll start at that and leave at that for right now.
Certainly, can address that. Maybe not to the degree, but I can certainly get a start on that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, are you going to go into providers in more depth?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait to see if you answered my question.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So this is just to talk a little bit about East Point and our customer service. So there are benchmarks that are required by the state, every MCO, LME/MCO has this, and one of the, I'll go through four of the main ones. We have, at that call center, which is manned 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, we're required to answer the calls within 30 seconds. And we also have a Grievance and Complaints Department, and we do occasionally get those, and those are to be resolved within 30 days. The hospital re-admits assigned to care coordination, everybody who comes out of an involuntary placement is assigned to care coordination, and claim for providers, to your point, they're required to be processed within 30 days. And that's very pivotal, because our partnership with our providers is key to their success and our success. So getting their claims through the system is really important, and in fiscal year 18, we exceeded the benchmarks that the state sets in all of those categories. And then I wanted to also share with you some results from the Perception of Care Survey that is done every year. This is done, surveyed with consumers, adults, youth, and family members, and they're asked a number of questions about us and our provider access, outreach, our responsiveness, any problems that they had, and I'm just going to show you real quickly about four slides, but the bottom line on this is that we continue to outperform every other LME/MCO in the state, and there are six others besides ourself. And you can see visually, East Point is the purple line at the top of the graph, so when they were asked, were you given a choice of providers, back to your question, we exceeded everyone else in that category. Was your first service in a timeframe that met your needs? Again, the purple line is at the top. Has your LME/MCO provider provided as much information as you need? The answer again is yes, and we're at the top of the heap there. And then finally, do you know how to make a complaint, if you need to make a complaint? And the answer is yes on that. So we were very pleased with those results, and not particularly surprised, because these results mirror what we got in fiscal year 17 as well. So it's, we're starting to see a trend in terms of consistency. Okay, here's my section on provider network, and hopefully we'll answer your question, if not, we'll dig a little deeper. So in Wayne County, there are currently 17 provider agencies located in Wayne County, and there are six, what we call LIPs, independent practitioners, and of course, one hospital. But across our network, there are 340 providers that we have contracts with that are eligible to serve Wayne County members. So for example, if there was a Wayne County member who found themselves in the western part of the state and were in trouble for some reason and needed assistance, we have contracts and can do what we call single case agreements to serve our members, no matter where they are in the state. In February of 2018, we provided a $2 million rate increase across the board to our providers that affected three outpatient providers in Wayne County. Here are also some of the services. Not all services now are provided in brick and mortar settings like they used to back in, back in the day when I started in this business, but now there's a number of them where we go to people in the community, and here is a list of some of those. About midway down, intensive in-home is an important one. We're relying more and more on peer support services, so someone who's been there, done that, and is now trained as a peer support specialist, we're involving that service more and more. The mobile crisis management, that one near the bottom, that's a really key service, because if someone is in need and they call that 24-hour line that I mentioned, our access line, they can be seen within two hours in their setting, that's the goal, within two hours. A lot of times, they arrive quicker than that, but people will come to where the person is. So just to make you aware, it's not always that building with the sign on it in the front where services are being delivered. Currently, there's no waitlist for behavioral health services in Wayne County. Did I get your provider question there, or?
No, ma'am.
Nope? Okay, you want to ask?
Yeah.
I was afraid of that.
I know this, I'm on the Department of Social Services Board, and I know there's been some talk about what's going on on the state level, but, and it's been discussed before. We have 17 providers in Wayne County, I believe, is what you were saying. I guess my question is, is that up until the last I heard, that the, the network of providers is still closed. In other words, is that the case? Is the network of providers still a closed? In other words, can any other providers across the state offer their services and possibly be approved? And the reason I'm asking, I'm from the private sector, and it looks like to me that the more providers that we have, and I have what I call a captive sole-source providers, the more providers we have, the more competitive that we could offer the services to our clients. So if you would address that, please, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I know it's a question that's been asked.
And it's a question that's often asked, so it's a complex issue, and I'll do my best to, to answer it, and then we can certainly talk more if, if we need to. So you are correct, when the LME/MCOs were established, the providers that came into the network at that time, it became a closed network. However, if there is a service that is particularly needed, or, you know, every, let me back up, every year, we do what's called our annual needs and gaps survey, and this is a pretty in-depth process, and it, it maps the providers, the, the members, the distance from providers, all of that. And if there is a need established either through that process or in the community, then we'll open the network and do a request for proposal for a particular service. So people do get in the network that way. The other thing that happens is something that's just happened in Wayne County, and that is determine there was a need for additional substance use services. So we did an RFI, and we have just, I think each of you got notification, we've just expanded and added a couple of services to one of the providers that were already here. In terms of balancing that network with the number of providers, it's, it is a balancing act, and it's somewhat difficult, because the services that are delivered, because of the service code definition, there are certain, certain staffing levels that have to be maintained. So keeping that provider network at a level that, if we, let's just say, for example, we brought in 20 more providers to Wayne County, then they start pulling that psychiatrist that's required for XYZ service, they'll, they'll pay him a, an extra $1,000 or whatever, and they'll leave this provider and go to this one. So it's really about balancing the network with the amount of resources that we have. So that's the way it is set up, but to your point, there are ways that people can come in to the network, depending on the needs. Does that help?
Yes, absolutely. I think what you're saying is that other provide, not other, other sources can be contracted by the providers, is that, I think you said you had like 380-some contracts?
340.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's how some of these people can, can offer their services, but they would not ever, unless things change, ever become a full-time provider, because it takes so much for them to meet the criteria to be a provider, and also lack of money. Is that right?
No, we actually have contracts with those 340, but you are, you are hearing me correctly that, so sometimes, I'm trying to think of a service where sometimes it's not sufficient in a county, nothing's coming to me right now, but whatever that service might be. If there was a need and you didn't have that provision in Wayne County, then we would do a request for proposal and bring in, a provider could apply, and we would open the network if there was a particular need identified.
Okay, all right, I got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Before we move from that spot, listen, when you speak of providers, did you say there were, what was the number of providers in Wayne County? And then I'll ask the question.
Let's see if I can go back.
Was it 17?
17.
17.
But we need to add the six, that's really 23, yeah.
So your, providers, as it's, as it's deemed on there, you're talking about doctors' offices and hospitals, or some medical provider, that's what you mean?
Behavioral health provider. So it might be mental health, it might be substance use, it might be developmental disabilities. That's, those are the areas we manage.
If someone has a broken leg, you're not talking about that?
Not yet.
Okay, and that, and I just wanted to reach over and get, get a physical one rather than a mental one. If I'm not messing this whole thing up, folk, maybe for political purposes, will say, if Medicaid is expanded, that providers don't want to provide the services, because they won't, they're not going to get paid at the rate that they want, and it makes it sound like that no one wants to get in that provider list. Are they saying that, hey doc, I gotta hate the name of the name, but just, any clinic, do you find that the clinics are not wanting to take people who are getting reimbursed through Medicaid?
Not at all, and I think, I think we need to be really clear. So our clinics, at this point in time, are behavioral health. So we're not seeing the physical health patients and funding those through our Medicaid. So our only funding sources are Medicaid and state funds. So all of the people that, or the majority of the people that we see are Medicaid, and then state-funded. But again, we're not seeing the physical health at this point in time. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes.
And so the answer, you don't have people running away from working with you?
No, sir.
You have people wanting to come to work with you?
Wanting to work with us.
Because when you said there was a closed environment, I mean, that's like you got it closed so nobody can't get inside, that makes me think that, it's not like there's a lack of opportunity, it's that more people could become providers if, that window was opened up for them. Because I go back to, for whatever the reasons are, there's perception out there, and since you're just talking about mentally, I'm talking about the whole range of
Sure.
of help that people need, is that there's a perception, or it's inferred that doctors don't want to see persons related to Medicaid, because they don't want to be limited to the dollars that Medicaid provides.
And that may be true on the physical side, I really can't speak to the physical, physical side, not yet.
All right.
Okay, but I think that is a perception. Okay, any other provider questions? Already lost one. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about ways that East Point has invested in Wayne County. So during fiscal year 19, we participated in 94 community presentations that reached over 9,200 people. That's pretty, pretty solid footprint in Wayne County. And then here are a list of, of some of the, the things that we have participated in, a couple of pages. One of the things I'd really stress is this crisis intervention training that we provide to your law enforcement people, that has been received extremely positively, and we provided training to 42 Wayne County first responders. And then there's a number of other things, including health and wellness fairs, active participant on the Wayne County Substance Abuse Task Force, and we had 60 Narcan kits that we were able to distribute to help with opioid overdoses. And I want to recognize probably a familiar face in the audience to you, Venesia Hill is our Community Relations Specialist in Wayne County, and she's, she's boots on the ground every day in Wayne County, and is an active, active participant in many of these things. So anything you'd like to add at this point? But know, know that face. Okay, that's all I want to share specifically about East Point and Wayne County, but I do want to talk just a few minutes about Medicaid transformation, and maybe answer or create more questions than, than what you have. Hopefully, I can answer those as they relate to LME/MCOs. So you know currently, we're in the process of transferring our entire Medicaid system from fee-for-service to managed care. The behavioral health system, what I work in, the, the mental health, the substance use, the developmental disabilities, we have been established as managed care since 2013. Now they're taking the whole state and the whole system and adding in the physical health, and this is to the point that, that you were talking about. So the physical health and the behavioral health will be integrated for each person who has Medicaid. They're dividing the system, and when I say they, I'm speaking of the state. The system will be divided into two pieces, standard plans and tailored plans. Standard plans will be managed by commercial, private entities. The tailored plans will be managed by what are now the LME/MCOs. So there are currently seven LME/MCOs, as I've said, those seven will transfer into what is known as a tailored plan. So the next time I stand before you, I will likely be presenting as a tailored plan. So the next time I stand before you, I will likely be presenting as a tailored plan. The legislation requires or allows for there to be five to seven, and currently there are seven. And the way this is going to work, the standard plans are going to take the population that is in, that is considered mild to moderate. The tailored plans will provide behavioral health and physical health. So when this starts, to, to your point, we'll, we'll handle the, the mental health and the broken leg once this starts, okay? So there have been, and much of this I'm sure you're familiar with, so I don't want to be too repetitive, but there have been four statewide commercial plans awarded and one regional contract awarded. And they, those contracts went to people like Blue Cross Blue Shield, WellCare, Centene, United. So they will begin operation, the way the plan is set up now, they will begin in November of this year. They're already sending out enrollment packets and working to transfer that mild to moderate to, to the standard plans. Once those standard plans are up and operational, then the tailored plans will begin a year out from the standard plans. The tailored plans have a, a four-year award cycle, and after the four years, then anyone One of the things about determining how many tailored plans they will be, that there will be, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and you all may have, may have heard of this and had familiarity with it, a committee of commissioners or act to come together and determine their recommendation for the, the regions for the tailored plans. Their recommendation was to leave the seven that exist now as they are. That recommendation has gone to the, the secretary of the department, and they're working on finalizing that now. As it stands now, the applications for us to become tailored plans will be issued in February of '20, so right around the corner. And we would become operational in the summer of '21. Now, we have a budget that is back and forth in the General Assembly right now. There's some discussion about whether those standard plans will start operation on time, and so we'll wait and see about how that turns out. The, the region that will begin operation as a standard plan will not affect Wayne County as it stands right now until February of '20. The first region that goes in only has one of our counties, and that's Wilson County. So you all would be affected by this new system in February of '20. So that's Medicaid transformation in five minutes or less. It's pretty complicated and there's a lot to be learned about it. Here's actually a timeline that I, that I spoke about. They announced that the, the RFP for the standard plans last February, they were awarded, and there you see the, the launch for November 19 and February 20.
And, Mr. Chairman, we do have a resolution in your agenda packet that, that our attorney has approved. And basically, it says that we support the, the tailored plan. And by supporting the tailored plan, there's still some local input and control that we would have. If we went all standard plan, it's all Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, it is somebody answering questions in Connecticut, not local. So by having the tailored plan, still with East Point, and for the higher type traumatic brain injuries and, and the tougher cases, there's still that local presence here in eastern North Carolina and that Wayne County can participate in. So very simply, that's what we are asking for, is approval of that resolution.
So that resolution's on page 13 and 14 of our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion for approval? I'm going to move Mr. Bailey to discussion. All in favor of please signify raise your right hand.
Thank you so very much for your time and attention this morning, and I'm always available for questions if you should have them. Thank you.
Before you leave though.
Yes, sir.
Just one second.
Absolutely.
I, I have had folk to be in my physical presence and say that one of the problems, you did mention the budget in Raleigh, one of the problems with that was that able-bodied people are getting services through Medicaid. So because you, as I understand it, you're providing services to folk who have mental, the mental side of the house. And so I think it's worthy, not to put you on the spot, but to dispel that notion that there are able-bodied people getting resources, whether it's a nurse or whether it's a check, through Medicaid that are able-bodied. And the reason that it just really smokes it this morning, but you being here, a person could be walking down the street and look like he could leap tall buildings with a single bound, but that's not what you're focusing on.
Correct.
Inside of his five inches right there, he not, might not be able to tell which building he ought to try to leap over. Is that fair?
It is very fair.
To say that?
Very fair.
And so I, I know that illustrious newspapers here, but I, I just wish that was something said that would dispel that as a notion, that people who are able-bodied, and that seems to be one of the drawbacks to getting past the logjam in Raleigh is that, that this whole business of somebody's getting something for nothing. And that would be lending it to your folk are proving something for nothing. And, and, and that's not a professional way to do a job, and that, it's just unfair.
No. And, and it's, I won't dig too deep into this, but the way our system for the behavioral health is set up, every service that's provided is through medical necessity. It comes in and it's approved by our utilization management team, which is staffed with licensed clinicians. We also have a psychiatrist on board that reviews authorization. So I think we could very much say that the people we serve need the services we provide.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we could, in, in consultation with the attorney, could we go ahead and do the first public hearing and make sure we get that in?
Do we want to get public comments first by the time or do the ordinance?
It, your, your, your call.
We'll do the ordinance first about that. That way we wouldn't be, be getting mixed up back and forth.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
While we're talking about this, we, we do need to, we've always had the public comments at 9:05. I don't ever remember doing them at 9:05. Do we need to kind of look at restructuring this at some point?
I agree.
Not today, but at some point. Okay. All right.
I'll give it to Carol at 11:00.
Never has been, huh?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're, we're going to, this will be the introduction to our public hearing with respect to the franchise fee for non-emergency transport. And as the board is aware, today we're holding a public hearing to discuss the purpose of franchising non-emergency medical transport here in Wayne County. We've been working closely with UNC Wayne Health, and they're fully aware of the direction that we're looking. The major drive for this change is that out-of-county transports occurring from UNC Wayne to other medical facilities outside of Wayne County are really taxing our current staff and taxing our current abilities. Trips direct to UNC Chapel Hill and BID have caused us to use our existing EMS resources and again tax staff, especially during nighttime hours. Since most emergency tran, or transports require advanced life support systems, which is ALS, we are using medics to supplement the non-emergency basic life support transport arm of Wayne Net. What we are looking for is to have an additional franchise company come into our county to provide this service between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, Monday through Saturday and all day on Sunday. This would allow Wayne Net to continue to operate during our peak times during the week, provide transport during the day for dialysis appointments, nursing homes, doctor's appointments, et cetera. If this resolution or if this ordinance is approved, the next steps that we have is to approve the ordinance is second, we're working very closely with UNC Wayne to make sure that the RFQ that we would send out for a franchise meets their requirements and that they would be happy with whoever we choose because we want to make sure that whoever the county chooses, that the hospital will be happy with as well. And then third, once we send out the RFQ, we would bring in the franchise to come in and interview. Then we would select one that we would like to recommend. And according to our attorney, we have to vote on that in two consecutive meetings to approve a franchise fee. So it does take a little bit of time. We're probably about 45, 60 days out before approving a franchise. So if there's any questions that you may have for me at this point. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Does anyone wish to speak? Please come forward and give your name, address, and phone number.
You'll also need to write it down.
Ma'am, it's four minutes.
Yes, sir. Is there a clock so I can kind of see it ticking down? Is that right here or can I look to see a clock?
It'll be on the screen.
I reside at 1,005 Harris Street here in Goldsboro, and my number's 919-648-7347. I'm here today, again, in my plight for Edgewood. There's still no answer for Edgewood, so 175.
Oh, oh.
Public hearing.
The franchise.
You'll have a chance to speak.
Okay. I don't know if this is public.
Oh.
Sorry. No, I have nothing to say.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak on this topic? Close. All right. Anyone who speak will close this public hearing. Do you all like to take action today?
Yeah.
All right. I entertain a motion then.
So move, move approval of the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance.
Okay. Motion made. Any further discussion? All in favor of please signify raise your right hand.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Where do you wish to go?
Let's go back to 9:05 public comments.
Yeah.
Ms. Radford, you can come now.
You're going to need to rewrite her name while this transcript is put away.
Do I need to say my name and address? Okay. Good. All right. Okay. So I am here for the plight of Edgewood families, for my nephew who I truly adore. Edgewood families still don't have answers. I was at the Board of Education meeting for two and a half hours yesterday. I had to leave to take my sons to an appointment, but I, I listened as they talked about Edgewood again and as I'm hearing them say, well, we should have made this decision earlier, yet there is still no decision, and that we're in the middle of July. And I've got to tell you, from a mom who has two sons with autism and has had IEP meetings since they were three years old, IEP meetings are not short meetings. They're not an hour, sometimes they last four hours long. The longest one for me was four and a half hours. And I don't understand how they are going to have IEP meetings for 61 families to transition to go to Meadow Lane for K through four. They still have not received all their letters back to find out how many families actually want to go to Meadow Lane compared to staying at Edgewood. They have given no plan as to what's going to happen with Edgewood students who are fifth grade through 12th grade. My nephew falls in that category. He's 12 years old, so not knowing what's going to happen to him is very disappointing to me. I have been told by Joe DiMaco that the school has a year to two years max. So with no plan for these older students, I'm terrified. What's going to happen to my nephew? Is he going to be put in a typically developing school that cannot accommodate his needs because he's non-verbal, he's not potty trained, and he has a lot of behavioral needs that would need him to be in a self-contained school versus being in a public school? I'm very concerned with our EC director and the, the statistics she said yesterday. She said that 22 families said yes to Meadow Lane, three said no, and 36 families have not commented back to her after two letters being sent out and phone calls being made. She said that social workers were going to be sent out to their homes to get answers. But if you don't have the right phone number and you don't have the address, how is a social worker going to do any better? And then they told me that if, well, they told the whole group, if these parents did not respond, they were going to go ahead and have IEP meetings and make the decision to put their children at Meadow Lane. For me as a mother, that's absolutely terrifying to hear that parents are not going to be informed of IEP meetings and the school district is going to make decisions for that family. Parents at, parents at Edgewood do not know this. So I'm publicly saying this, that the school can decide what to do if you do not show up at this IEP meeting. Parents have been misled by Wayne County public schools. Sanja Emerson did not share the right statistics. I have been calling Edgewood families all night and all day. I have at least eight no's. I don't know how she only has three, and I'm still contacting people. I've had families say, well, we sent our letter in two weeks ago, how did she not have it? That concerns me as well, lost letters in the mail. So I've asked all families to either call her by phone or to email her and the Board of Education to make sure they get the right statistics. I had one family member tell me, Christina Pridgen Hinton, I mailed and emailed her saying I wanted Cameron to stay at the old campus, so me and one other person is all she heard from with no's. Also, mostly every parent at that meeting was led to believe that the hallway for Edgewood at Meadow Lane would be for Edgewood students only. I told her in my email, they should be required to call every parent and let them know that Meadow Lane kindergarten would be on that hall also. When you're talking about a self-contained school, you're talking about very limited noises and distractions and things like that. When you're talking about five typically developing kindergarten classes, I know y'all know kindergartners allowed. I've got an incoming kindergartner. He is allowed. They're going to be on the same hallway with six other self-contained rooms, and I can only imagine what would happen to these students. So I'm begging you, I'm begging you, please build Edgewood a new school. We've, they've deserved this for decades. Special needs families have been neglected for decades. We are here and we deserve that. And it's my 10-year anniversary today, but I'm here for my nephew. Thank you.
Mr. Barry Merrill, I think you'll step forward.
I have some vision issues, so if you'll help me out with the form. My name is Barry Merrill. I live at 432 Club Knowles Road in Dudley. My phone number is 919-922-1499. Gentlemen of the Wayne County Commissioners, we know you all to be good men who have, who are trying to do your best for all the people of Wayne County, and you have difficult decisions in front of you. As you know, this board, along with the, in partnership with the Wayne County Board of Education, is charged by the state constitution with providing a good public education for every child in the county. The county is failing to provide that to 30% of our students. 100% of my grandchildren, when they enter public schools, would go to a failing school. That is unacceptable to my family. All our grandchildren and children are owed better by you and me. Last year, this board set aside a property tax increase for, for schools, for schools to put a sales tax referendum on the ballot five months later. There was a pledge that you and others would work to pass it. We damaged the schools' reputation of the county and the prospect for future We damaged the schools' reputation of the county and the prospect for future tax increases for education with that decision and our underestimation of what it would take to pass the referendum. As you head into an election, we understand that the unpopularity of a property tax increase this year and next year, but we cannot afford, we cannot address school, low-performing schools unless we have additional revenues. A sales tax, again, is preferable at this time, but we cannot afford, my grandchildren cannot afford, and another referendum failure and two more years to wait for school improvement. We cannot afford the loss of growth, businesses, jobs, taxpayers, home values, and children condemned to poverty and public assistance because we don't provide good public schools for all. Let's make sure we learn from the lessons of this past fall, from the mistakes of this past fall, and work with the Board of Education and the school administration, I want to say farmers and the business community, to get this sales tax referendum passed. I think we can do it by 60 to 40% vote. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, the comments are closed.
Donald's presentation?
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, if you'd like, I'd, you know, make a quick comment about Edgewood. As the board is aware, that was, the wing was originally part of the bond that we had planned, the $42 million bond that we issued. And for some reason, and this goes back kind of to the crux of the whole situation, was that that wing was removed from the plans that we submitted to the local government commission. So therefore, the project was not funded. Again, we have put the money back in for operations this year with the expectation that they operate Edgewood School as is for the next two years to allow them time to come up with a plan. To this date, we've not heard back from the school system about what the plan is. Is it a partial open? Is it not a partial open? So we're pretty much as much in the dark as the parents are as well about what the next steps are with respect to Edgewood.
Could I follow up with a comment there? I was not aware that they were actually sending letters out to parents about actually getting commitments to move to Meadow Lane. Our agreement, if I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, and that is, our agreement was that we would take the $587,000 that was earmarked for payment, for debt service, to build Meadow Lane, and that was the agreement from the school board to, that we could take that to use it. We reinstated it with conditions, and those conditions were two years of operating Edgewood in its present form. Am I correct?
That is the intent of what we have responded back to.
So they, in essence, the school board, has made a decision evidently, from what I'm hearing, we need to verify, that they in fact have already designated a portion of Meadow Lane School for the use of some students at Meadow Lane. Is that correct?
That's what...
We need to get some clarification there. We need to get some clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to add to what you said, that switched the amount of money to 1.2 million dollars against the county itself, because it's not only, we got to make the payment on that as well, and we committed the money, so it's 1.2 million dollars.
Well, that is correct, because it's a double whammy. If you pull the dollars back that we were using for debt service and we give it to the schools for them to operate Edgewood, then the county's going to have to replace the 587,000, so it is a 1.2 million dollars. So as far as this board, we did all we could in regards to funding to ensure that Edgewood operated for two years so they could come up with a reasonable plan. Evidently, that did not work.
Ms. Chairman. Yes, ma'am.
Clarify, make sure that the public understands and that I do too, but our recommendation for the two years, for the 587,000, was with Edgewood operating at the same location it always has. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was clear in what our intentions were. Why has that changed? That's something that we don't know, that parents don't know, but it's a valid question. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, now get yourselves.
Good morning, Chairman Gurley and Board of Commissioners. I'm going to lighten your hearts this morning. I thank you for the opportunity to come and make some brief remarks about our summer learning initiative that's going on through our public library and throughout our community. And Commissioner Mayo, I want to thank you especially for your active service on the library board and for helping to facilitate my being here this morning. Thank you for that. Well, if we didn't know it before, we know it this week, summer has arrived, right? And so typically, by the time summer arrives, families are ready for a slower pace, especially families with children, and rightly so. I believe that children's summer should be filled with wonderful things like family vacations, trips to the park, dripping ice cream cones, and hours upon hours spent chasing fireflies in the backyard. And when children are really fortunate, they also have summers filled with wonderfully engaging learning experiences, like learning about space and the location of constellations in the night sky, learning how to build robots, how to connect electrical circuits, learning how to grow their own food, and maybe just as important, how to share with others when they have more than they need. And hours upon hours of time spent curled up, preferably with someone they love and care about, with good books, because that's how you instill in children a passion for reading. Now, no doubt play is important, it's important for all of us, breaks are important, but research is clear, and it shows that youth experience learning loss during the summer months in reading as well as in other academic areas if they do not participate in educational activities that keep their minds engaged. And so for decades, public libraries have offered annual summer learning programs as a way to combat what is known as summer slide. Unless you think we only provide learning experiences for children, you should know that throughout all our public libraries in Wayne County, there are summer learning programs for children, young adults, and adults alike. Because after all, public libraries foster lifelong learning. But back to the children, this summer's theme, A Universe of Stories, as you might imagine, gives a nod to the Apollo 11 moon landing. And on June 8th, the library launched summer learning in Wayne County on the lawn of the Goldsboro Library. Joining the library in this important initiative were major sponsors, the Friends of the Library and the City of Goldsboro's Community Cares Committee in conjunction with the Mayor's Reading Initiative Program. We were joined by 25 of our beloved community partners that Saturday morning. Our goal was to celebrate the hard work students had done throughout the school year, but also to impress upon parents the importance of keeping their children engaged in learning throughout the summer months. We wanted families to know that in addition to the summer learning opportunities provided by the public library, that there's a whole wealth of opportunity for learning that takes place in our community, every end of our county. Meeting Commissioners Bell charged to let's make sure our children are continuing to read all summer long. This year, we worked with our community partners to try to deepen our impact, and we established a program called the Summer Learning Ambassadors Program. Nine business partners quickly stepped up and offered funding, which allowed the library to purchase books for children's and other educational materials. And 23 business partners in our community, from Mount Olive to Goldsboro to Pipeville and Fremont, are serving as what we're calling Summer Learning Ambassadors. This wasn't a hard challenge for businesses, because businesses understand, maybe more than anyone else, that children who are well-educated become future employees who are well-educated and capable of doing the job that needs to be done. Here's how the program works. So all throughout our county this summer, when families visit a place of business, the proprietor has been encouraged to talk to that child about the importance of learning and what they're reading this summer. And when they do that, the child is rewarded with what we call a Kit Buck. A Kit Buck features our library mascot, Kit the Kangaroo, and the children can then in turn go to any of our library locations and shop in our summer learning store. Public libraries are an important part of a community's educational ecosystem and are a wise investment. And so I wanted to thank you all for investing in our public libraries and to let you know that your investment is impacting children in this community in a very positive way. I want to end by showing a video of that Saturday so that you can feel good about your investment and how it's impacting children. The video was gifted to us by Kenny Stern, who is a friend of the library. Thank you for your investment.
Can we take a little break?
Yes, sir.
All right, did you want to say something before we took a break?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Donna. I've been often on the library board since I've been a commissioner. I'm presently on the library board. I want to thank Donna and her staff for taking the Wayne County Library to the next level. The library is a very, very important ingredient in the training and in our classrooms at school. But there's a lot of other things besides just learning from a book. The library has gotten into all kinds of activities, as you see, that keeps these young people's minds busy rather than may possibly getting into trouble. So thank you again, Donna, for you and your staff and what you do, and we just appreciate all the hard work that's being put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, take a quick break. All right, we're back in session. And next, Mr. Hidkett, we have David Harris.
Yes, sir. Again, I wanted to have David Harris here, who's our consultant for the buyout program. And we've had some questions and concern from some citizens, and I felt it was important to hear from the horse's mouth of exactly what's going on. And one thing I do want to publicly thank David for the work that he does. There's probably not a better consultant in the state of North Carolina that could help us with this program, and David, we really do appreciate what you do.
Absolutely. Thank you. We try to live up to that.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, we actually reached a port of milestone in the program at the end of June. We had presented offers to purchase to 100% of the homeowners that we were able to. And the list in front of you, basically, when you take out the ones that have withdrawn from the program, we still have nine that are on hold in seven springs for store property review. And you get back down to what's left, just owner occupied, and there are four rental properties. We provided those off for purchase on every one except for the rental properties. And then there was one family who had withdrawn, who decided to come back in, and so in June, we assigned the attorney, surveyor, and appraiser to go ahead and get that one going. It's, you know, when we look at a buyout program, everybody's looking at, okay, how many properties have been acquired? What we have found is that the first evidence and the first sense of relief that a family has after these years of having gone through this is getting the information they can use to make a decision. It's unbelievable the change in the approach and demeanor when they get the offer to purchase, and they have on a sheet of paper exactly what they'll receive, how their prior benefits have been treated, what additional gap assistance they'll receive from the state. At that point, they know they're in control. They're not waiting on the state, not waiting on the county, not waiting on the federal government. They own it. They are now in control, and they can decide to do whatever they want to do. They have all the information in front of them which to do so. They consult with family members, that sort of thing, they make a decision. That's really the objective we always pushed for initially. Sure, as offers are accepted, that gets into the attorney, we schedule closings. But getting everybody that offered a purchase is just a milestone within the program. As a result of those 61 that received offers, 46 have accepted. We'll have 15 that are left. A lot of those received offers in June, so they're still looking and going over. A number of them are going to want, are still in their properties, and they're going to have to purchase replacement properties. We encourage them to go ahead and send back in the offer to purchase if they're interested. We will not be able to schedule a closing, but they'll have a place to go. And so they are, those families are looking at that. But it's, in the last 90 days, it's just really finally all come together. Once we can get all the legal work done, all the surveys and all the appraisals done, get that out to the families in the form of an offer, it's finally all coming together. So now our time is spent in scheduling closings, getting information to the attorneys, conducting closings. In fact, before this meeting is over, you will have purchased two more properties in the buyout program. The ones are already closed, the ones in the process. For the four investor owners, one of those offers have already been made in July. We'll have the other three made before the month. For the one owner that came back in, when their information is received, they'll be able to get an offer instantly as well. And that's the status of the program. The only holdup really we've got is seven springs and the nine properties. And Chip has consistently been sending information to the state to try to get that freed up. With staff changes at the state level, it's sort of kind of gone from different ones to another. We got a new grant rep, notified the grant rep immediately as to trying to resolve that. We've now made, I think we've made all the offers on the other families in seven springs. We've already closed on a number of them, and yet there are still nine that are there that we haven't even assigned an appraisal to, and we can't because it's not authorized in your grant project yet. So once we get that freed up, we'd be able to go full steam ahead with those. One aspect of it, since the attorneys, the surveyors, and the appraisers are caught up, they'll be able to do seven springs in probably 30 days. But we just have to get the green light from the state to do so. Any questions?
This is all Matthew, isn't it?
Yes, this is all Matthew. No, nothing yet on Florence.
Ms. Chairman. Yes. I guess probably...
I guess probably I've worried David more than possibly anybody else on the board as far as phone calls and gathering information. But I do know this. I do know that, and I want to applaud you and your staff for doing what you have done. You can't do it if you don't have the funding. I understand that. But since the money has been made available, these 84 families that we were looking at, you know, four, five, six months ago was where I got involved, and finally it's happened. I still don't like the idea of things being so slow from, all the way from Washington DC all the way to us. But it is what it is, and I just want to commend you for the time and effort because I do know that you put in a lot of hours that people don't know about in order to get this done. So I just want to thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
One quick question. The four rental properties, was that initiated by the tenants or the owner?
It's a mixture. There were some that were, they're all applied for as owner occupied. And in one case, it was a question as to whether it was a rental agreement that was between the owner and the tenant, whether that was, did it make the tenant the owner? No, it didn't. The owner of record was the one with the deed. We also had, there was a couple that just said that they were owner occupied. And when we get into a program, what we're still looking for is, is this a second home? Is not eligible. Is it rental property? It's still eligible, but it has to go through a different process as opposed to owner occupied. We have one out of those four that is literally normal, expected in the program, and that's an individual who was owner occupied at the time, got the insurance money, was able to make initial repairs on the house, stayed there. This was within, less than a year after the hurricane. No indication as when the buyout's going to occur. And so the individual was able to then get the resources, bought a house. Well, he's sitting there with that house, he's sitting there with the damaged home that he'd spent the insurance money on, and said, this is crazy, I still don't know when I'm going to be able to get bought out. So he rented it. Perfectly fine. In fact, probably one of the smartest moves that anybody could make. In that case, the tenant, when the buyout program occurs, when we make the offer, the tenant is then eligible for additional rental assistance, moving allowances, as a result of the property being acquired with federal dollars. And that's normal. That just kind of goes with the program. You don't ever know if it'll occur. But when it does, then we follow the federal requirements as they exist, and there'll be assistance provided to the tenant in that case. No effort to abuse or do anything. It was simply making a smart decision because we, they didn't know when this thing was going to start. There hadn't even been a grant agreement between the county and the state. So the owner exercised due diligence and said, hey, look, I might as well rent it. It'll help me pay for the house that I'm buying. And so it worked out for him. So we'll do all of those now. They were obviously not high priorities. We start with the homeowners first always, and then go with the, with these that are unique, and in this case, the investor owners. So we're working on those now. We have fortunately located all the tenants, getting information from the tenants, which is essential. And we're required by statute, when the offer of purchase is made to the owner in a certified mail, the same day we send certified mail notice to the tenant of their relocation benefits.
So if a house was rented, the storm came, damaged it, insurance company didn't, was able to wiggle out of paying anything. So that could potentially have become a, an inclusion by the owner of the rental property if the house was damaged, insurance company was able to avoid any responsibility. Are they...
The tenant would be eligible. We had to exercise due diligence in trying to locate the tenant. In a federal, in an acquisition program, the, their eligibility for benefits is because they've been involuntarily displaced by the flooding. Not, well, obviously not a choice of their own. And then subsequently, if that particular property's going to be purchased with federal dollars, you go back and try to locate that tenant. And even though the tenant's moved somewhere else, they're still eligible for rental assistance and moving allowance because under the federal law, that person is classified as involuntarily displaced, and they're eligible benefits. If we can't find them, then we can't find them. In the case of the owner who bought another house and decided to go ahead and rent the damaged home which he had fixed up, then that eligibility occurs at the time we make the offer. Same benefits to the tenant, exact same benefits. It's just when is it triggered?
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Next is a motion to approve the Purple Heart Day proclamation, and I believe Vice Chairman Pete would like to read that.
Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend the meetings of the coalition, so I don't know exactly all their plans for the third, which is the banquet. I'll try to see if I can't find something out before that takes place. But I certainly do have a plan to attend. It'll be at the Maxwell Center again. So anyhow, here we go. Purple Heart Day proclamation. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as a badge of military merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. And whereas a Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7, 1782 during the Revolutionary War, as the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor and merit. And whereas on February 22, 1932, the Purple Heart was revived on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth out of respect of his memory and military treason. And whereas per United States Army Regulation, the Purple Heart is awarded in the name of the President of the United States to any member of the armed forces of the United States who is wounded or killed in action against an enemy of the United States or as a result of any act of any such enemy opposing armed forces. And whereas throughout our nation's history, the men and women of the United States Armed Forces have answered the call of duty with honor, decency, and selfishness, demonstrating bravery and courage in the face of danger. And whereas in the defense of freedom, many loyal and brave Americans have been killed or injured in the performance of their duties. And whereas it's especially fitting that we set aside today to recognize the service and sacrifice of all our citizens who have been decorated with a Purple Heart. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Wayne County, North Carolina, does hereby proclaim August 7, 2019 as Purple Heart Day in Wayne County. And all of those who ever see the Purple Heart encourage citizens to support the Purple Heart banquet August 3, 2019, where a special tribute will be given to our local Purple Heart recipients. And when it's there, whereof I have hereunto set my hand and fix and seal the county of Wayne the 16th, July 2,019, A.J. Gurley, Chairman. You'd be very surprised at the number of Purple Heart recipients that we have in this county. It's people who really gave all. So I know that all the commissioners are invited, so if you'll let me know, I'll make sure I get the tickets. So Bill Graham will know who he's planning to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a form of motion.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bates, we have a form of motion. Any discussion, comments? If not, all of those in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Next, Commissioner Hackett, appointments committee.
Yes, sir, we do. Thought you forgot. We have several reappointments today, Mr. Chairman. The first one, we recommend it, we reappoint Mr. Irving Watts, Mr. Malus Kelly to the ABC Board. That's in form of a motion.
All right, you heard the motion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Secondly, we would like to appoint Mr. Brent Heath, Mr. Barry Gray, and Commissioner John Bale to the GWTA Board. And that's a form of a motion.
All right, heard the motion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Next, we'd like to reappoint Mr. Willie James Walker to Wayne County Council of Aging. And that's in form of a motion.
All right, I've heard the motion. Please signify, raise your right hand.
Next, we'd like to reappoint Mr. Justin Pittman, Felicia Brown, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. That's in form of a motion.
All heard the motion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
And last, we'd like to appoint Mr. James Holden to the Pipeville Planning Board. Form of a motion.
All right, all in favor, motion, please signify, raise your right hand.
That's all we have today.
All right, thanks.
Chairman.
Now, Mr. Tony K, get to our next public hearing.
Yes, sir. Next is a public hearing to receive public comments on a request to rezonate two acre tract of land identified as a tax parcel from community shopping to residential agriculture 20, RA 20, in the New Hope Township. And Barry Gray, our planning director, will make that presentation.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
This request is a rezoning request, as mentioned, for two acres. This is, of course, a public hearing for that. If you look at the screen, you see the area there that's highlighted there in the middle of the screen. The blue denotes the community shopping district, and on this property there currently is a house or residence. You can see the yellowish-orange to the northeast and south of that property is RA 20. That is the zoning district that the applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to. So it is surrounded on three sides by RA 20. And as you can tell as well, it is the last community shopping district on Highway 70 as you're heading east out of Goldsboro. With that said, we have advertised for this public hearing. We did post a sign on the property. We did advertise in the newspaper as required, and we did send notices to all adjacent property owners as well. The planning board has reviewed this and also recommends approval. And one of the property owners is present. She is here if you have any questions for her specifically about the request. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Again, Mr. Chairman, again, I think there were some questions in regards to some of the other property owners there as to the taxing of their properties as commercial versus, since they're using it for residential. So if you could just explain that so that it might be on the record.
Right. Right. Regardless of the actual zoning, whatever the actual use is, if it's a residence, that's what they're taxed on. It's present use is what it's taxed on.
So if they're currently using it as residence, it's taxed as residence.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
And furthermore, if any of the property owners are having difficulties in selling it because of the zoning, they may do the same thing that this property owner did, and that is request that it be changed at that time.
That's right. Anyone interested in rezoning their property in this situation can contact me or the planning department. I'll be glad to work with them through the application process and through the public hearing process as well. So they can contact me directly if they'd like.
Great. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone wish to speak? If not, the public hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we approve the change of rezoning of this property to residential RA 20.
Per Commissioner Daughery's motion, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We did a review of it at our 8:00 AM briefing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So to move.
Motion made. All in favor, please signify, raise your right... I'm sorry.
I won't ask more questions since I did see them back there.
Oh, we forgot them.
Well, they probably would. They'd probably be fined for doing that. There was, I gotta find it in the book.
Or any of the...
Where was it?
They were here somewhere. Oh, actually, they are in our consent agenda.
Yeah, I know, page 116. It's not a hard question. It's just something that caught my eye when I was going through this yesterday. It was on page 118. On the speed citations, how they went down so dramatically, is that because you guys are doing such a great job and everybody slowed down? I knew that's what it was. But it just did catch my eye. It went from now to over 3,000 to 800 times.
Come on up front.
Yeah, come on up. I mean, you guys are doing a great job. I'm not trying to be critical, it just caught my eye.
If you notice, the year with the highest amount was, I believe it was 2017. That was that first year that we bought the first batch of new radars and issued them out. And we put, we now have 49 radar units on the road, and that was the first year that we started that, putting new radars out on the road, getting more deputies certified in radar and getting them on the road. So there was a big spike in citations. And then that kind of came down the next year. And it's, one, because they were doing such a great job that people know not to speed through Wayne County anymore. And two, it got to where not necessarily looking, the speeds that they were writing tickets for may have increased a little bit. There's some different factors in why those numbers came down. But one of the big things is that they're doing such a great job that people know not to speed through Wayne County.
The public just needs to understand that you guys, it's not just how we promote the rest of radar, you guys are running it too.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you, David.
I'd just like to ask you...
Yes, sir.
Now, I watch, this is from just my observation. It seems like that the deputy sheriff cars are more visible.
And that's a good thing.
And I congratulate you on that. But it seems like the state troopers tend to hide behind bushes and things like that.
Mr. Camori, I can't attest to anything that I've ever told you.
I'm just making an observation. But I've always felt like prevention is worth a pound of cure. If you're out there visible, that keeps people from speeding. If you're hiding behind a bush, you just caught them after they were speeding.
Well...
And I mean, I don't mind saying, because the state trooper officers listen, they listen. But it's, to me, we're talking about an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And this is a conversation that I've had with people all my life. And I'll give you, traveling to Fayetteville for years, at the intersection of 95 and Business 95, they would have, very visible, sometimes a couple of cars parked out there. I used to travel somewhere where they'd have a car, and I believe they'd have a maniac in the car. But people would slow down, and for the next some odd miles, you could tell they weren't running 85 or 90, they would back down to 75 or 80. So I just, I don't thank you. Because if you have a, if you're getting, you know, if you, the numbers here indicate that you're preventing, you're catching people. But if the numbers were high and when you're, then it means that people start slowing down there. And an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I just wish that all law enforcement sort of worked the same way. So the public would feel like that you're trying to prevent speeding versus hiding to catch somebody. I just wanted, I'm not trying to...
Yes, sir, we don't try to hide.
Don't comment on that. I just got a text from Highway Patrol. What kind of...
1962, 427 red, COVID. That's a 1962, not the one I have. Speed, I'm sorry.
No, sir. I was thinking the same thing.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, James. Thanks for the break, guys. And if you do, and if you do have any slack time, go get on 40 between Raleigh and Durham and you can stay busy.
A little out of jurisdiction.
Yeah, I know, that was just...
All right, I had a motion on consent agenda. I forgot who it was.
Mr. Camori.
Mr. Camori.
I'm sorry.
You had made a motion on consent agenda. You made a motion on consent agenda.
Yes, I did.
Okay, all in favor, please signify raise your right hand.
All right.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Tony Cott, we're in new business.
Yes, sir, we do need a motion to appoint the voting delegate for the North Carolina Association and County Board of Commissioners 12th, 112th Annual Conference, which will be located in Gofford County, we do need a motion on that.
And we do thank you for stepping up and doing that work.
Yes, sir.
Especially the county manager.
Voice from Mr. Payton, appoint county manager being voting delegate, all in favor, please signify raise your right hand.
Give me the dates on that again, please, ma'am, so I make sure that my, they do conflict. That's the same time that Community College is having theirs in Wilmington.
Next is county manager comment, one of the, I just wanted to kind of do, and we had our WCDAs investors meeting last week, and they showed a couple of pictures with respect to our shell building. And I don't know if anybody's been able to go out to Park East and see the process, has been doing... Um, it's going on, they should have, you know, we had issues with wetlands, we finally got that resolved. And I will thank Kendall for the job that he's doing, Kendall's kind of been our project manager for us in WCDAs on this project. But there is work going on, and supposedly the next couple of weeks walls should be going up. And so it's good that we can show work, Mark is submitting the shell building on a bunch of projects right now. So there is activity, and Mark is getting good feedback from the projects that he's submitting the building on as well. So, but if you haven't been out there, especially in the next couple of weeks, you should hopefully see the walls. And that really is an incredible investment, this board took about $2.2 million to make sure that we do economic development and have product for Wayne County. So I just wanted to give you that quick update.
It might be a good idea, but in the very near future to get Mark over here to talk with us, you and I know a lot what's going on, and there is much taking place.
Yes, there is.
Very positive.
Yes, sir. But yeah, really do appreciate the work that Mark's doing. A couple of other things I did want to mention, our last EMS substation, the Wilson EMS substation on Miller Chapel Road, we're looking 30 to 45 days. So Kendall said that the work was stopped, they had to do some painting, but we're looking 30, 45 days. So that will have that grand opening. I do want to thank the board members that showed up for the EMS grand opening substation in Mount Olive, and I apologize that I could not attend that, I was at a meeting in Wilmington. But also, I want to thank, publicly thank Chip Crumpler. Chip did a, we just had the grand opening of the Seven Springs Volunteer Fire Department. If you have not seen the grant or the work that was done by Golden Leaf and paid for by Golden Leaf as part of the flooding in Matthew. And again, Chip went back twice, asking for additional funds to make sure that they did get the building that they wanted. It's an incredible building, is a huge win for the community, and I appreciate the chairman being there as well. Very proud to see that building finally done and completed. And again, I want to thank WCDAs, because WCDAs also served as kind of the conduit, because they, Golden Leaf needed a nonprofit to kind of run the funds through. So, but if you've not been to Seven Springs, incredible building, and really something to be proud of. And again, just wanted to thank Chip for all the work that he did with the fire department and Golden Leaf to get that building for us. It's B and seven, B and six? B and eight. So very, very great asset for our community. And again, the chairman, or vice chairman mentioned the Purple Heart, which will be August 3rd at Maxwell Center. And again, the county is helping put on that event as well at the Maxwell Center. That's all I have.
Commissioner May.
Very seldom I don't have any comments, but we talked about the library, we had the presentation today. I had, did have a DSS board meeting. Other than that, it's been a pretty good vacation we've been having here.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Camardi.
I would like to first start off by giving, acknowledging the great EMS station at Mount Olive. And I'd also like to add that I wasn't able to be at the opening ceremony. I had had a trip scheduled to Disney World with my family, and I was in Florida at that time. And I would like to thank Dr. Barbara Carnegie of Mount Olive, and of course, she's part of the University of Mount Olive, for making comments in my place, I want to publicly appreciate her. Next thing I would like to do is bring some attention to following up on the EMS line. Often here at this table, and thank goodness, especially by some members, there's all in their prayers, they're always acknowledging the first responders, the whole, everybody, firemen, EMS, so forth and so on. But I would like to bring to this group's attention that the federal government, this current administration, has cut back on funding for the medical care of the folk who responded to 9/11. There was a, within the last 10 days to two weeks, there were some hearings in Washington, and they had a gentleman on there making a presentation, sometime within the last two weeks, certainly last month. And he passed away since then. But a lot of people like him who have, who developed cancer and some other tragic stuff are being, and while we pray for them here at this board, it appears that the nation does not recognize EMS the way that we at this board tends to pray for them and recognize them. There's something else that we do at this meeting is that we stand and do the pledge of allegiance. And without commentary, I would just like for every person to think about the pledge of allegiance and what it actually says, and how I feel like we are treating our citizens. I do not think that we are living up to what that pledge says. And I would ask every person who might hear this, see this meeting, to think about pulling out the pledge and reading it, and then comparing the pledge of allegiance to how our citizens are being treated. And I would close by saying, thank you to the lady who came from East Point to talk about what they do. And I would like for everyone to back off of the miscommunication about what Medicaid is or is not, and simply provide to the public the real advantages of Medicaid. But if there are some hindrances, and out my hope, Bill Payton will remind me saying this, but he has said many times that information that he's received, that doctors will stop, that some doctors will stop accepting patients because they're not going to be satisfied with what they're going to be paid through Medicaid, is that a fair?
And Medicare as well.
Medic, I'm sorry, yeah, both of them, Medicaid, Medicare. But the thing about it is, anyone who's accepting dollars for what their services are could say they're not satisfied and keep jacking the price up. I mean, there's got to be some limit, that's all I'm saying, it's just, I mean, goodness gracious, in America, we got to start accepting some limits as to what you can expect to drag in to your coffers. Thank you.
Commissioner Daugherty.
I want to talk about transportation today. It's amazing how long it takes to get projects done. But I hope everybody is aware that the Beston Road intersection now has a red light there, and it is open, you can cross across there. But that has been completed. But the other thing I want to point out is, I'm noticing as I travel to the beach, that it appears that Craven County is getting ahead of us in regards to getting that shield in that portion. And what I mean by that is, they, the improvement that is going to have to be done to the freeway is actually having a wider shoulder for parking of vehicles to have it as interstate standard. And they have been down there working, extending that shoulder in and around New Bern. Once those improvements are done, and it appears as if they're going to run up through Cove City and that stretch. It looks like they would have taken the newest section, which is Goldsboro, and extended those so that that shield would have been there first, just a little ambiguous. But at any rate, they are in fact working to do the improvements on US 70 to break it up to interstate, and that's good, that's good. Now, if we're going to get a bypass around Kinston, I think then maybe we could really have something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bell.
I'm met with wages and gateway, no special report to give. And I was supposed to go to the ribbon cutting at Mount Olive. Commissioner Camardi was, had gone on vacation. And I was going to bring a few comments about that concerning his emergency room. But Commissioner Camardi, I apologize, I was unable to do it, I got hurt, I couldn't go. So they bypassed your emergency room, so I don't know if you're going to bring that back up or not.
Mr. Bell, I appreciate your touching on that. And I know that people on, sit on this board up here that know a lot more about emergency service and cure than I do, and they've served on in those capacities actively. I would only like to just say to our county manager, anything that can be added to our emergency stations in the far reaches, wait for it, in the far reaches of the county. It's far away from the heartbeat of the center of where the hospitals are. Anything that can be added that would be, and I'm not, I don't have anything in mind, but anything that can be added that would make it serviceable for people out there, that can be added to our emergency, I want it to be done. I mean, we, we select many different projects, and I think that that's one of the top ones. And Mr. Acop has led the conversation about the EMS stations, and at times, I hope he don't mind me quoting him a little bit, because at times when it won't getting done real fast, he said, if not now, when? And I appreciate that. But I would only want us to not, John say that jokingly, but, because he know my mindset about emergency rooms and that kind of service, we don't need to just have it located far, far away. As citizens, we deserve to have it as close as possible, every possible, I'll just leave it at that. Don't want to miss giving that a shout out, Mr. Bell, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Acop.
Yes, sir, I had a good vacation, I got out of Wayne County for two weeks. And I'm not going to say I didn't worry about Wayne County, but I didn't make a whole lot of phone calls back. Mentioning the Mount Olive EMS station, I did attend that, and really appreciate what Kendall and his staff and others, Barry, Chip, that was involved in making all that happen. And, you know, we've got one to go, and we've been told by some of the staff on the State EMS Association and whatever, that we're very fortunate, we've got Wayne County where if the truck is in the station, they can respond anywhere in the county in eight minutes, enough, there's not many counties can brag on that. Also, I'd like to remind everyone, like Commissioner Bell did, you know, the Purple Heart banquet is, that's very important. My first wife's father was a Purple Heart recipient, and like Mr. Payton said, there's, there's people all over this county walking around that we don't have a clue what they went through for us to have the freedom that we have today. And also, I was not, I was out of town when they had the ribbon cutting for the Seven Springs Station. I did call some of them and explain to them why I would not be there. Mr. Chairman, appreciate you being there, Chip, and who, anyone else that was there, I really appreciate y'all going. But that was, that was long overdue. In fact, someone told me that Seven Springs went from the smallest fire station in the county to the largest fire station in the county, and I am proud of them, because that building is going to benefit that community a lot more than just the fire station. They've got somewhere now they can have events, and it's, it's, it's more than just the fire station to them. It's a gathering point now, you know, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pay.
I've been sitting on my hind end for, we're down for about two months. I appreciate you guys allowing me to participate in meetings while I was out in recovery via telephone. It's obviously not the best way to be part of a meeting, it's not, but it was during budget time, and I just thought it was that important. So I did. I'm back temporarily anyway, we'll see. But I appreciate you guys allowing me to do that. I did, on the 4th of July, I got a call from Mayor Scott, and he says, Mr. Payton, I know it's the 4th of July, but would you please come down, the Speaker of the House is going to be here along with Representative Smith. And so I got up and drove down there, and believe it or not, it turned out to be about Medicaid, didn't it, Mr. Camardi?
Yes, it did.
The Speaker got up and was talking about the budget and the veto, and what it was going to take to get it done. Of course, Mr. Camardi, he zeroed right in like I knew he would. But it was, it was a good conversation, I really think it was. And of course, even though the reasons of being down there was primarily about the sewage system, treating the plant for Mount Olive that they need so badly. I expressed to them my desire that hopefully that they would find some solution. The $19 million that we need so badly for school construction in this county cannot be discounted. We need those dollars, and there are a lot of other money out there for Wayne County as well. So let's just pray that our legislators can find some way to get together, and I don't know whether that's going to be. But I know it's very important to this county, and I was happy to go down there, even though he didn't take a picture of me down there. I'm not kidding you, yes.
I'd like to chime in just one minute, thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. I was reluctant to specifically say anything about that, because the budget is still in flux, and it has, anytime, there's some political implications for it, and that's why I just say, and I add on to you, I want someone to find a midpoint, a middle ground. I won't call the legislator's name, but I was sitting on my porch, almost a month ago, talking to a legislator. And this is a controversial way of getting to the point, because I was trying to find out what was the sticking point. And he and I agreed that if you could put it in terms of anything, let's talk about something weighs four pounds. And it sounds like the governor wants the four pounds, and the legislators want to give him two pounds. But there's a three pound up there somewhere, and that's where I wish that folks could see where they could get to. You might not get the whole four pound, might not need to be limited to the two pound. But I just think that those illustrious... But I, I, I just think that those illustrious, smart, intelligent, well-meaning citizens that are going to Raleigh, that work as legislators ought to be able to find that midpoint. And the reason that I asked the young lady, the question that I asked her this morning, was because there's a story going around out there that the reason that it's being held up is because someone doesn't want to agree to give people some Medicaid expansion who doesn't deserve it. Meaning people who are able-bodied and should be working instead of waiting on some Medicare/Medicaid assistance. And that myth needs to be dispelled. Because I don't think people would, uh, knowingly approve someone to get something that they shouldn't get. And so, uh, thank you, Mr. Payton, for what you said. There is a lot of money in the budget that could come to Wayne County. But, and then I want to thank newspaper because they have printed both sides of the conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you all for, and thank you. And also, one little bit of shout out to the editorial writer. I, I read an editorial that he did the other day, and there was a sort of a balance to what that editorial writer wrote. So, you know, thank you for the newspaper, and I hope folks can get their heads together and move on. Thank you.
And one other thing. Can't have my time back, huh? No, I just want to take 30 seconds. And I mentioned it earlier about Mark Pope. We really do need him, get him over here. This board needs to know, because he had a lot of those things that we can't discuss publicly yet. But I just think it's important to know that we have a good man and a good staff over there, and they are working hard. And I think we'll be seeing some positive results here in the very near future. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell. Yes, uh, Mr. Acop, uh, reminded me of something when he said a lot of people doesn't know about people that has a problem, uh, you know, that's being wounded in combat from, and, and received the Purple Heart. Well, we lost 55,000 people, uh, in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. But there's another element of people out there like myself that got contaminated with Agent Orange that there's no record as to how many. I'm suffering from a disease now because of Agent Orange in Vietnam. So there's a lot of people like me that's out there that didn't get shot, but did get shot.
I agree.
I agree.
Yep.
All right, um, I'll piggyback this little bit on Commissioner Payton, Commissioner Kamart's budget talks. And I listened, real interest from Ms. Rafford's comments this morning. So, Mr. Parker, Mr. Honeycutt, help me understand, or, or help me if I don't explain this right. In the House budget, there was several million dollars worth of appropriation for Wayne County. I think 19 million for schools, 5.5 for the sewer operation at Mount Olive, and there's other ones and twos out there too. Building at college. That's right. Plus another $100,000 is in there for the college too. If the governor had not vetoed it, wouldn't we be able to start moving forward that Edgewood School, that appropriation, that 19 million Edgewood School, and give us a head start on the K3 problems we're facing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? If not, we're gonna go to the closing session for the purpose of.
Same as you.
Thank you.